Order this regular city council meeting for Monday, February 13th, 2023. If we can rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Ben Alsper?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Lanyon?
President.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
All right, and now I'm looking for approval of this evening's agenda unless there are changes that need to be made.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Seven.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. Now we have another, uh, we have an audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to come forward. All right, moving along. We have the distinct honor of presenting a 100th birthday recognition to Mr. Alfred Wright. And therefore, I will read that recognition now. So the city of Williamson recognizes Alfred Wright, whereas Alfred Wright of Williamson was born on February 26th, 1923, and will be 100 years old on February 26th, 2023. Whereas he has lived during the most eventful century of the world's history. And therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Williamson wishes Mr. Wright all the best on his momentous day. We hope his special day will be filled with love, laughter, and that his 100th birthday is as amazing as Mr. Wright. We express our honor and our pleasure to extend this certificate of recognition on this 13th day of February 2023 to Alfred Wright on the occasion of his 100th birthday with sincere congratulations and best wishes on his special day and every day thereafter. And it's signed by our council members. So I believe we have the family of Mr. Wright here, so if you'd come to the podium, please. So can you tell us a little bit about Mr. Mr. Wright? And what's your connection with him?
He is my stepfather.
Okay.
And he was born in Virginia.
Okay.
And he came to Michigan, I'm not sure when, but he worked in the Detroit Diesel plant.
Okay.
And him and his wife at the time owned some property. They bought property in Weberville, planning to retire there.
Okay.
Which they did. They built a house there, and she passed away. So then my mother, Amelia Van Reiper, she was married to my father for 60 years, and he passed away around the same time. Al came to the Williamson Senior Center for someone to help him get rid of his wife's belongings, clothes and shoes. So my mother and a group of women went to his house and helped him with that. And then her and Al started hooking up. They were in their 70s, and we encouraged them to go ahead and marry. Because they were kind of dating. He was staying late, watching TV, falling asleep. And I said, I don't like that you sent him home after he's been sleeping on the, you know, that late at night. So I encouraged them, and so did my brother and sister, and they've been married now. This will be their 22nd year.
Oh, gosh.
So unfortunately, he's now in hospice.
Okay.
He had a fall back the end of December, a little concussion. And while he was in the hospital, they found out he had prostate cancer. So he's been, since that fall, going downhill rapidly. So.
Well, we are so pleased to be able to present this to you.
Well, thank you, and he's been a great stepdad.
Well, please extend our blessings to him and also to your mom. What a truly wonderful story.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
He's gonna appreciate that.
Thank you.
He knows we're down here getting it.
Wonderful.
He enjoyed coming here and paying his water bill.
Does he have, do you have like a special cake plan for his 100th? What is his favorite?
Well, unfortunately, he's not even eating right now, so. We had always planned on doing that, and it's just not going to be possible. But he's, has all his faculties.
Sure.
And so he understands what's going on, but it's just that, you know, mentally he's there, but his body is aging out on him, so. Yeah, we're hoping he makes it to the 26th, but I keep telling him he's already hit 100.
Yes, it's a birthday lull.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much for being here this evening, and again, please extend our best wishes.
He's gonna appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right, moving along, we have our council meeting minutes of January 23rd of 2023. I'm looking for a motion to approve or changes if necessary.
Motion to approve.
Thank you so much for your support.
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brandon, you had an opportunity to review accounts payable for this week.
I did. I did have a chance to review it. I didn't see anything that was concerning. Obviously, similar to what I discussed at the last meeting, this also included a lot of the heavy tax payments that we pay into our county systems. So it's a little larger than it typically would be throughout the year, but nothing that was of concern. So with that, I would make a motion to approve checks 76407 through 76472 and ACH 366 through 377 for a total of $1,26735.69.
Thank you so much, Brandon. I appreciate that. Thank you for taking the time, too, to go over that with Terry, who is your backup. Do, does anybody have any questions regarding accounts payable? Again, it was a very large amount, but as Brandon said, you know, there's a lot of payments for taxes going out that need to be made. Tom?
I have one, just out of curiosity. What's the memorial park honor for all for 10,000, 200?
Go ahead, Dan. Thank you.
So that is the engineering work for the non-motorized pathway that's been talked about for some time. And that, another council member had the same question. We received a grant to pay for the engineering, so that's what it's for. Yeah, it's through LAP, Mr. Ford. Yep.
Great answer, great question. And just for viewing community, the memorial park honor for all is formerly known as Scout Island over by the elementary school by Explorer and Discovery. Our former council member Kent Hall has been working on this. This has been a passion of his for many, many years. It's still continuing to move forward. We have foot bridges that go over to Scout Island. Eventually, that pathway will connect to the footbridge near the Eagles as well as sidewalks near the elementary school. So it really is becoming part of that walkabout community that we have always talked about. Any other questions regarding accounts payable? All right, so we have a motion. Do I have support for that?
Support.
Thank you, Dan. Holly, will you call the roll?
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Alsper?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
All right, now I'd like to go ahead and move into our public hearing at 7:06. And this is for the Red Cedar River Crossing National Environmental Policy Act, the acronym NIFA. Scott?
Well, hello, everybody.
Tom, do you have a light?
Time for a quick presentation. So there we go. That's our beautiful Red Cedar River, and it happens to be taken right at the location that we're talking about tonight.
Excellent.
So John Bradley is here from Spicer as well. John has been working with the city on the NIFA process. He's been doing all the hard legwork and so forth. One of the things that's come out of that process is that because we are crossing the Red Cedar River with a replacement water main, and we'll get into how that's happening, we have to do a public hearing. We have to post out that, a notice to the public that this is happening and receive any comments. So that's why we were doing this.
Thank you, Scott.
So, you know, you've seen this map before. We have all of our projects for HUD, and we, I didn't leave in here possible drinking water involving loan fund type projects, too. But the water system has three critical crossings of the Red Cedar River. There's one here by the bridge, there's one here by the park and St. Mary's, and then there's another one that crosses over to our other park that you guys were just talking about a few minutes ago. And we're going to focus in on our crossing right here. So the FEMA flood maps, the old FEMA flood map has, this is the 100-year floodplain in this area, and it even includes potentially some of the downtown business district in here. The new maps that are being worked on right now and are finally go, are going to get your final approval through the feds are what you see on this map here. So yes, it extends out into McCormick Park, and it does have the end of Cedar Street by St. Mary's. But the new models are not showing that it's going to be flooding this area in here. And partly, this is due to the fact that that dam is gone. That was there years ago, and they're finally catching up to, you know, the real topography of the area. There's a lot better digital mapping nowadays than what there was many, many years ago. So the modeling is much more accurate now. And we've signed off from our perspective on this, but it has to go through the federal process. It is important to note that we have a project here that is definitely in the floodplain, and HUD says you have to go through this eight-step process that we're doing right now tonight. There is a water main that's being done in the back alley over here behind City Hall and 109 Building and so forth. In this map, it would start showing up in part of those things. But because it's an improved area and it has the harsh surface of the alley, the buildings, it doesn't impact emergency services. That project, after we've been talking with the HUD folks, we believe that we don't have to include that, but I'm still going to mention it tonight just as a safety precaution if that were to be an issue. So focusing in with the aerial image and where we're going to do our work. We're going to have to replace the water main across here. There's a high bank over here, so it's very quickly you're out of the floodplain. And we have a technique that's proposed to not dig up from the surface in this area. Basically, we'll be doing horizontal directional drilling as long as everything with the geology of the area allows us to do that. We don't need to make any modifications. It's too early for us to know 100%, but we're going to be getting ready to do solo pourings pretty soon, and that'll give us the geology of the area and make it known for certain.
So we may not have to part the Red Cedar?
Yes, where that's the whole objective is not to part the Red Cedar.
All right, everybody start saying something there.
So it's actually not only the lowest environmental impact, but it also usually is much cheaper to do it that way. So it's advantageous to us anyways to do that. It also minimizes the amount of time that the project takes to accomplish. And we do not foresee it to be something that's, you know, rough on our nearby residents or businesses or the school or anything like that or the church. So we're really happy with this as, and we've actually not received any comments from the public. And we're presenting now for the camera tonight for anybody that wants to see that information. But, you know, I think we've pretty well met our obligation. We anticipate the work to be going on in the summer of 2024, which is next year. That's our timeline, and it'll happen when all schools out.
Great.
Any questions from anybody?
How long would that typically take from start to end in Clement weather? What would you say would be a length of time for that project?
John, why don't you take that one?
Okay, hi, John.
Good evening, everybody. Once they start, they can't stop.
Right.
What they don't want to have happen is they have to pre-drill a hole and solidify it and then rave it out so that they can pull the pipe that they need. But I wouldn't imagine, that's not a very long crossing, so I wouldn't imagine that's going to take more than a couple of days. I mean, they have to fuse, they'll have to fuse the pipe. You know, it'll be one long contiguous section laying out on, however they decide to lay it out on the ground.
Sure.
Whether it's sort of Grand River or just take a turn somewhere. But I don't think it would take more than two days.
So then when the, where the pipes connect on the north side and the south side, what type of disruption is that going to create? As far as you're going to have to dig down and connect those two pipes on each end?
There'll be an excavated pit basically on both ends of this work. If you're looking up here where the drilling machine is at, they'll go down into the ground. But usually, you'll have an excavation there. That turns into that connection pit where you go and, you know, traditional lay pipe and a trench type of thing.
Sure.
So our side, I mean, McCormick side is obviously our property. The other side is that private property that we'd be hitting on on the right of the street instead of the right of way?
It's all the right of way of North Cedar Street. The plat is 66 foot wide to the river and through the river and on the other side.
I just wanted to make sure that wasn't maybe something like private property that you had to like start digging up and excavating, but.
Well, our right of way doesn't go through the river, but it, right up to the river's edge.
Goes over the river, through the woods.
Oh, yeah, over the river, yes.
So when you did the pipeline work there underneath the railroad, in my part of town, there was no disruption of service for the water that I can remember at all?
That was a similar type of construction technique, but they actually did a horizontal jack and they put a casing in first, and then they slid the pipe in afterwards. So they had like an auger in it, and they pushed the casing as the auger advanced. Imagine like, you know, those big drill bits that you use to go through wood and stuff. You put on a much larger scale. So that's similar but different. This has a smaller head, goes through and makes a smaller hole first. And then when they get to the side, they pull like a ream type thing, a widener. They attach to the end, they pull that through, and it pushes the soil aside and makes a bigger hole as it pulls the pipe through. So we anticipate, there's a six-inch pipe there right now that is around 100 years old. And we don't have an exact date, except we believe it's in the early 1920s that it was installed. We don't have a real good idea of where it's at, except it crosses the river and within, you know, probably a 30-foot wide spot that we know of. So right now, it puts us at a little bit of a precarious position, and we hope nothing happens before the project.
Right.
So do you expect to see any serious disruptions in water service?
Not really, because we, part of the work of preliminary engineering is to figure out where is that, that existing pipe at? Even if we have to excavate on both ends to make sure that we know for sure where it's at. We'll move over sufficiently far enough that we shouldn't have any issues. There are some techniques that we might employ to, even if we had to use ground penetrating radar, you know, there's things like that that I've got contacts with people that we can, if we need to, use that technology to get a good idea of where it's at. But we'll install a new one, test it, pressure test it, backdetest it, then get it tied to the new system and tie over and abandon the other one.
Great. Brandon, do you have a question?
No.
Okay, all right.
Sure.
And John, do you have?
The only disruption will be the tie in itself.
Okay.
After they're done pressurizing.
Yeah. There will be, because we have to tie over to a line that has services on it. We'll have to coordinate with those adjacent homeowners and the church, the school.
Yep.
That's why we want to do this during the summertime.
Correct, excellent, Scott.
Yeah, I'm curious, if the pipe broke and how it all went over the new ones, does the water end up in the river or is it below the river?
It will work its way to the river. It'll bleed to the river.
Does it get up to the river?
How long is the new pipe expected to be good for?
Oh, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a PVC or a high-density pilot, ethylene pipe. It'll, it'll last longer than you and I are around.
Yeah. It should be good for another 100 years or more.
Excellent. All right, there's no further questions for John or Scott. I am going to go ahead and close out this, do we need a motion to close out the public hearing? All right, we're going to close public hearing now at 7:18 and go back into our other agenda items, and we're coming up on our action items. We have the appointment of Jeffrey Sand to the Economic Development Corporation, TIPA 2A, TIPA 2B, for a term that's set to expire 06/30/2027. Looking for that motion. Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Slash board.
Both. Thank you both. Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Alsper?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
All right, our next action item, last action item of the evening, is to set our city manager annual evaluation. We were just talking about this earlier. Tomorrow is our city manager, John Handtens', one-year anniversary. We're very excited to celebrate that. And one thing that we were going to do is we're going to give an evaluation. So I'm going to turn this over to John, let him walk us through his memo. It's very short and quick.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. So yeah, it's just our best management practice to evaluate your city manager every year. Something that I've gone through over the past 16 years now, I guess. And what will happen from here, assuming that council sets the evaluations, I'll send out, it's more of a narrative evaluation form for all of you to work your way through. And then we'll discuss that at the meeting in March. It's really a great opportunity to make sure we're all on the same page. And, you know, when city managers, your fate is somewhat linked inexplicably or inexplicably to the fate of the city. And I think we're in really good shape, but there's always ways we can improve our communication and make sure we're on the same page, so.
Great.
Don't have much to add for that, and I look forward to the process. It's, it's not anything that I've ever viewed as a negative.
Sure.
And it's my job to make sure that stays in the positive, so.
All right.
But please do, when you get the tool, if you have any questions about it, it's six or seven questions. It's, I guess I'll just, I've been doing this long enough that I think I've kind of graduated past rates of one through, one through five. Because you end up with a lot of, you know, 4.6s and 3.9s and some fives, lots of fives. But what it is, for it to be more meaningful for all of us is to have that open dialogue.
Fantastic.
So that's, that's a wrap.
All right, well, it's a, it's a very easy motion. I'm looking for that motion.
I'll make a motion to set the city manager's annual evaluation for the regular council meeting of March 13th, 2023.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Wolf. Does anybody have any questions regarding this? I can tell you, current council members, we've not done this with the city manager. And so I look forward to it because I think it's going to be a great conversation, a great dialogue. It gives us opportunity to give you feedback and ask, you know, questions. So I'm excited about that. And I think all of us who are on this table have probably done performance evaluations and reviews in our, in our professional careers. So with that being said, if there's no questions, I will ask Holly to call the roll.
Ben Alsper?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
All right, that concludes our action items for this evening. Moving along, we're at our discussion items. One standing item that we have on this is our road diet. Do we have an update?
Scott, can I give us just a brief update?
Absolutely. I'm very pleased to report that Spicer got the, I guess I'll call them 95% drawings, okay? Because they're at a stage that we're done taking our, you know, changes and so forth to them, but it needs to go to MDOT for their review and comment. Once MDOT gets back with us, the next step would be to schedule a public hearing for that.
Excellent, we're getting closer.
So we are getting closer. I believe that MDOT also would like council to re-adopt a resolution. So it's getting about time for us to bring that forward, too.
All right, excellent, perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. If that was a great update, does anybody have any questions regarding that?
What kind of resolution would that be?
It basically indicates that the city of Williamson, the council, is in favor of MDOT moving forward and working with us in partnership to do the road diet.
Okay, will there be a dollars figure associated with that?
There will be a dollar figure associated with us because the city is initiating the change. So far, we've looked at it not being, that resolution isn't a dollar figure, but we are committing to the fact that the city is going to cover the costs associated with changing the striping and some.
Signing our surprise.
Yeah.
Correct. And there's been some question about the lights and how that works, whether there's a protected left turn and that kind of thing. So that, that aspect is being still, it's in discussion still.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Prior to adopting the resolution, it's our job to let you know about what this thing's going to cost. So we'll have that prior to the resolution. I know where you were going with that, so if you want to adopt a resolution, there is.
And we've done a lot of resolutions for a lot of projects, so it's something that a majority of the council members are familiar with. Brandon, you had that?
We had talked previously about having MDOT come and talk to us along with asking questions. Would that be something that happened before the resolution, after the resolution? Now that we're kind of like now intimately working with them on stuff?
It'd be before.
Okay.
Okay, excellent, great. My last question for that is, once we do the resolution, when do you think we will see this project kick off?
We anticipate the project being able to happen during construction season this year.
Okay, excellent. Probably after the end of school?
Post jubilee.
Yes.
All right? Post jubilee, yes, John.
Yeah, so that's all, and that's great feedback, and that, those are all things, the, you know. Grand River is under the jurisdiction of MDOT, but there are things like, because we're the driver for the project, right?
Right.
We can pick when we would start to deploy.
Okay.
That makes, that makes perfect sense to me.
And that gives us enough time, too, to educate our community, to make sure that we put the word out there and really kind of drive it home that, sorry for the pun, that changes are happening on Grand River, and we want to make sure that our residents and businesses are aware.
It's going to be, and we're going to talk about this in a couple, a couple of weeks in, at the visiting session. It's going to be a very busy construction season, which is great. A lot of these projects are, they're due, now, I wouldn't say they're overdue, but there's a, there's a real coordinating effort we're going to have to. You know, whatever we can do to, you know, numb the pain, I guess, at this point of construction, we are to do that. Because frankly, we're the ones, we're the ones who, you know, deal with the concerned residents, and we, we're up to that challenge. But if we can avoid that, you know.
This particular project was, I mean, once boots hit the pavement, it's supposed to be relatively quick, right?
Yeah, correct.
It's not a matter of like a few days, weeks? What do we?
I can't imagine it being more than a couple of days of painting and construction.
Yeah, they have to, they might have to grind some of the old margins off. They're not going to paint over them with, with black. And MDOT said we have to grind that, so there's that operation, there's the new painting. But it's all coordinated, and it needs to happen systematically and quickly because you don't want traffic just wandering all over the place, so.
Sure. And then would the lights be at the same, would the new lights be at the same time? Or would that, I'm assuming that it's all out of work hand in hand?
That's part of the discussion with MDOT, because they, there, it could be that it's, we do striping and signage first, and then they might want to see how things react to that. So that's, that's some of the stuff that we've been discussing with them. There's not, I don't have a hard answer for you on that yet.
Well, we have signage northwest, east, south, indicating new traffic shift, new traffic pattern. So that way, as people are coming into town from any direction, they're going to see that?
Yes.
Okay.
I do want to add one little thing. As we've been talking with people in the North Putnam area with our project, you know, we've talked about the fact that we're adding bike lanes, and people have asked questions about, they're happy. I've had many people say, I'm really happy to hear that you're putting bike lanes in there. What are you doing about, you know, the Four Corners and Grand River? And I'm, I can actually say, well, by the way, and I've been able to lead into and tell them of what we're doing, and it's been received very, very well, so.
Great, excellent. Terry, last question.
Is there anything we can do to help MDOT decide that there should be a protected left turn signal there?
You've already studied that.
Is that driven strictly by numbers, or is there?
To some extent, it's driven by numbers, but we have indicated that we get this question a lot.
Right.
Okay. Is there a community involvement type thing that we could, we could say, well, 57 people signed up and they signed a petition or anything like that? Or, I mean, I don't know what drives them to decide that that's something they should do.
Well, to some extent, you do have to let the numbers drive it to any, because, I mean, it, speed limits are the same kind of thing. You can't arbitrarily put, you know, a 14 mile an hour speed limit because you want one.
Right.
To some extent, the numbers and the traffic engineering has to substantiate what you're doing.
Just one more.
Thank you, Terry. That was a good question. All right, we'll go ahead and conclude that discussion. We'll move along now to correspondence, receive information only. We do have a notice from Consumers Energy. The other one is our North Putnam Street construction notice. I love this. Is this going to be hand-delivered to the residents? It already was. Fantastic, excellent. So then I'm, I can assume safely that this is what William Street will get once it, we tee that up for later this summer. This one, obviously, it's anticipated start beginning of May, anticipated open to traffic August 19, final completion October 6. So this would be the format for the rest of the projects throughout the summer and also the upcoming years.
That's correct.
Great, excellent.
That's cool.
Have we had any feedback from residents yet now that they've received these?
I know that.
And I know you were speaking with them.
Yeah, we have made personal contact with everybody directly adjacent to the project. The mailer that you see in the packet, a very similar one, was delivered via US Post mail, you know, the snail mail, if you want to call it that,
Right.
to everybody north of the river that's within the city limits. We do know that it has made it outside of the city limits a little bit because of some of the, you know, the postal routes that are there. And we've gotten two phone calls so far.
Okay, excellent. Well, we'll continue to talk about this as May gets closer. Thank you.
So I keep seeing this Consumers Energy notice thing. It just showed up in the last three packets or so. What are they, they just raising the rates? Is that the deal or what?
John, I'll let you get on that. John, I'll let you get on that.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. So consumers, I, I'll admit, I didn't read this one because we get them so often. But anytime they go for the, the Public Service Commission, they, they have to request, they have to hold a public hearing and notify all the communities or their customers that they're, they're in a public hearing to raise rates. So I assume that's what this one asked me, and I didn't read this one.
Yes, Tim, thank you.
Yes, this is a gas cost recovery factor case. And it's where they calculate the actual cost of the actual gas that they're providing and they make that into a factor to put on, on bills. So it's a way of showing what their supply cost is for gas. And interested parties can come there and challenge that by saying you could get gas cheaper from a different source perhaps. It's, it's very complicated and you have to have an expert witness. But this is what happens every year. And then at the end of the year, they have a gas cost recovery reconciliation to see what actually they spent. And whether then there should be a surcharge or a, or a refund based on the difference.
Great, thank you.
So it's like an annual of them though?
Yes, so yes. Every single year, they have a.
It increases every three months or something? And you make a.
I have a feeling if it's increased every three months, we'd probably be a little retalking about it more.
Councilmember Hanson, don't make your vacation plans based on that big refund you expect.
Right, right.
I've never said that.
That's the only advice, that's the only advice I can give, you know.
It would be a credit.
He has one house to do. He does.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, moving along, we've got our department had reports. So I'll just turn this right back over to city manager Hanson.
Just a reforboard, I mean, we have a lot going on as, as I stated. Looking forward to getting together with everybody on, on March 1st at the NISA building. I had the opportunity today to have lunch with the garden club. That was fantastic. And we talked about all kinds of things related to Williamson. It was great, it's a really great group. And we, we did talk about the road diet and folks were pretty excited about that. And they do a really great job for us in town. So it, it was fun to be there and a lot of the folks I already knew, but it was, it was cool to just have a nice dialogue about. We got pretty far, I almost said beads, but that'd be a really bad connotation talking about the garden club. But, but we got pretty far into some details of a lot of different things going out of town. All, all in positive, so it was, it was good.
Great, thank you so much.
That's all I have. And I do want to say thank you. I mean, it's been, it's been a, now the action items are done. I'm going to make one full year, so.
Yeah.
It's unofficial till the end of the meeting, but so I appreciate everybody. We, we.
We've got that addition.
Yeah, right, we've got that. But it's been a, been a, a great year, I think, for the community and for, for me personally. And I just have a lot of gratitude for all of you. So thank you for that and to the community, thank you.
It feels like there's a whole bunch of things that you've kind of teed up. And now we're ready to knock them off, down the course, you know? There's, it's going to be a busy year.
All right, moving along, we have our report from the Livingston County Building or Department of Building and Safety Engineering. They handle all of our permitting in town. It looks like we've got some work going on, not as much as usual, but that's okay. It's winter time. And so I just look forward to seeing that each time we get the report. It lets us know that activity is happening here in Williamson. If you do have questions regarding any type of permitting that you're seeing on these reports, please reach out to John. He will get those questions answered for you. With that being said, we're coming up close to the end of our agenda. It's time for committee and subcommittee reports. Would anybody like to share from any other meetings? Any meetings, yes, Tom?
I had a NISA meeting Thursday, basically just two agenda items. One was, they finally came to a resolution with some Weberville dealings that they've been dealing with. So it was nice just to have that kind of summed up. And then we mentioned last meeting, I think, last NISA meeting, the deputy chief brought a visitor, Ed Retard. So NISA is in the process of going through the proper steps to post that position. We did hire an interim deputy chief. So we'll look forward to seeing how that plays out.
Great, thank you for the update, I appreciate it. Any other council members?
We didn't have a meeting. We were hoping to have a meeting.